Welcome, everyone. I now call the November 17th, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell provides the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the Agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, we will take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please say "here" when the City Clerk calls your name. City Clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil? Councilmember Manke? Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present with the exception of Councilmembers McNeil and Manke, who are absent unexcused.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently, and mute your microphone when not speaking. Moving on to meeting agenda approval. Staff recommends reversing the order of the public hearings to hear Agenda Bill 23-172, the 2024 Property Tax Levy for King and Snohomish Counties, ahead of Agenda Bill 23-171, which is mid-biennium budget amendments. Does council agree? Or have any problem with that? We got thumbs up. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to public engagement opportunities. You can take the Lot EFG survey open through November 10th if you haven't taken it already because we've gotten a ton of respondents on it. Council is exploring ways to temporarily activate city-owned Lot EF&amp;G. Share your thoughts on a potential concepts with a five-minute online survey. We've got a... The comprehen-
Yeah, Mayor, this looks like last week's must-
I was gonna say, we, uh-
...review because all three of the-
We-
...pass sentence, but-
We, uh, we did that already.
We'll see if there's-
I was there.
-updated one and come back to it.
Okay, sounds good. All right, we have a proclamation for Native American Heritage Month. I know we went through that last part a little faster than we were expecting, right, Whereas Native American Heritage Month is celebrated each November as a time of recognition for the significant contributions of the indigenous peoples that have inhabited this land from time before colonization and incorporation, and whereas Washington State is home to 29 federally recognized indigenous tribes and well over 300,000 Washington residents identify as American Indian, Alaskan Native, or Indigenous, and whereas before incorporation, the land we now call Bothell was first inhabited by the Willow people, who were members of a larger group called the People of the Lake and the Duamish Tribe. And whereas indigenous people were separated from their homelands due to battles, genocide, and Western expansion, and while honoring the customs and accomplishments of Native Americans, we also acknowledge our nation's history of settler colonialism that has inflicted violence and deprivation upon indigenous people. And whereas despite the attempted eradication of indigenous communities, Native Americans continue to live, learn, work, and contribute to the community in Bothell. They have rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim November as Native American Heritage Month in the City of Bothell and encourage our community to actively seek knowledge about the original inhabitants of North America and commit to preserve Native American heritage and traditions for generations to come. And I believe we have Victor Begay from Cascadia College here to accept.
There you go. And thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome to say a few words.
Thank you. You put my eyes on. Good evening, greetings, Mayor, councilmembers, residents, and guests. My name is Victor Begay. I am Navajo. I am an Assistant Professor of American Indian and Indigenous Studies at Cascadia College. I also serve as the college's tribal liaison. I want to thank my colleague Gabby for reaching out to the community and strengthening the relationship between Cascadia and the City of Bothell. Their office recently co-sponsored a successful Indigenous Peoples' Day event on Monday, October 9th, at our campus. I appreciate that. Native American Heritage Month is a complicated experience for many indigenous communities. The month is a reminder of horrific genocides, traumatic history, failed relationships, and broken promises. Yet, at the same time, it can be a launching pad for understanding context, discovering difference, and reorganizing our interpretations. I remind the council to be explicit and intentional in their policy and decision-making. I ask the council to recognize and honor tribal sovereignty. It is apropos and germane to consider multiple stories and experiences as you do your work. I thank you, and I look forward to our continued work. And I invite the council, as well as residents and guests, to join us and become enrolled students at Cascadia College, take some American Indian Studies and Indigenous courses. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate this proclamation. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Diabetes Awareness Month. Whereas Diabetes Awareness Month is an opportunity to acknowledge the more than 37 million Americans living with diabetes, especially those within our community, who inspire us to advocate for medical and societal advances that make community education and life-saving treatments more accessible. And whereas over 10% of Americans have type 1, type 2, or gestational diabetes, and tens of millions more are at risk for developing this chronic disease which affects how the body turns food into energy. And whereas though the medical community has made great strides in helping individuals manage their symptoms, many in our community still contend with the daily challenges of managing blood sugar levels, the dangers of long-term complications, and the costs associated with life-saving medicine. And whereas awareness of the risk factors and warning signs of diabetes and prediabetes can lead to better outcomes for patients and is crucial to preventing long-term effects and complications of this disease. And whereas our community is made up of individuals who live with diabetes themselves, families who support loved ones with diabetes, medical professionals who care for diabetic patients, scientists who help develop innovative medicine to treat diabetes, and community advocates who support diabetes education and awareness. Now, therefore, I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, do hereby proclaim November as Diabetes Awareness Month in the City of Bothell and encourage all in our community to join in activities that raise diabetes awareness and help prevent, treat, and manage this disease. And is Katie Hodenland here? To accept? I'm gonna go ahead.
She thought it was her sister.
Oh.
That's what she posted on Parents of Kids Today.
Okay.
We need someone to accept. We've got two type 1 residents.
Well, come on up. Let's do this.
Having not prepared anything, I will simply say I do very much appreciate the need for Diabetes Awareness Month. When I was diagnosed, there was no diabetic in the family, and so we didn't know the warning signs or symptoms and/or anything else that could have led to quicker care or knowing what's going on. So, given my family's own experience with that and the experience of diabetics and parents of diabetics, type 1, 2, and gestational, raising awareness so that treatment can happen sooner is really, truly vital. So, thank you very much.
I never would have guessed that you hadn't prepared that unless you would have told All right, next up, we have Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Whereas for the past several years, the National Coalition for the Homelessness and the National Support Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Bothell for low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance services providers as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations. And whereas no parent should have to send a child to school hungry, no baby should be without the comfort of the nourishment needed for mental and physical growth, no elderly person's health should be jeopardized by lack of appropriate foods, and whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within their communities. And whereas the rising cost of housing, lack of publicly-owned affordable housing, and the aftermath of the COVID-19 pandemic have exacerbated both food insecurity and the homelessness crisis. And whereas the city has partnered with many organizations committed to sheltering and providing services and food supplies to people experiencing homelessness. And whereas the Bothell City Council has prioritized developing a housing strategy in the Council's 2040 Vision and Strategic Priorities Document that would include opportunities for a variety of housing types to serve all income levels. And whereas the Bothell City Council has also prioritized developing a human services plan in the Council's 2040 Vision and Strategic Priorities Document that would address food scarcity and hunger challenges faced by Bothell residents. Another for I, Mason Thompson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 12th through 18th, 2023, to be Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week throughout the City of Bothell. And I believe we have Heidi Shepherd here to accept?
She's on Zoom.
We do. Heidi, can you hear us?
Okay, oh, you're on it.
It's virtual. Heidi, if you can hear us, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson, councilmembers, and general members of the community. I'm Heidi Shepherd, Board President of the North Urban Human Services Alliance, otherwise known as NUSA, and I'm here tonight in support of your proclamation for Hunger and Homelessness Week. This particular proclamation is the first for Bothell, which only underscores the impact of your city on improving human services. As NUSA supports all five of the North County cities and providers, we are so very encouraged by the progress that has been made in both hunger and homelessness as we all continue to work together to improve the quality of life in each of our cities. For a closer look at the services combating hunger, I am pleased to introduce the providers Tara Droni and Elise Harris from Nourishing Networks, who represent Bothell, Kenmore, and Woodinville, and will be receiving in person the proclamation this evening. Thank you, Bothell Council. Thank you, Bothell community, for your constant support of human services.
Thank you. Thank you for the proclamation. Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Tara Droni. And I'm a volunteer and advocate in Bothell, and I've lived here for about over a decade now with my husband and two children. My daughter was hoping to be here to talk about kindness later, but something else got in the way, I think, for that. But, um, over the years, I have served on a variety of councils and such, and I found my way to Nourishing Networks through the North Shore School District and kind of investigating. And being an advocate in the North Shore School District, you get to hear a lot from a lot of families that are struggling from time to time. And as I listen to our community speak about the challenges they encountered that I also faced as a caretaker for my own mother, who is, she struggles with food and housing insecurity, and she's a senior on a low-income, fixed budget. I discovered there were far too many dead ends and just communication gaps that kind of paralyzed our community from making progress. And it wasn't because there wasn't help already out there to do it or people willing to help. So, as I continued, I found my way, and Elise and I decided to reignite things in North Shore. And I'll let you introduce yourself, and I'll stop talking because I'm talking too much.
Hello, I'm Elise Harris. I'm a Bothell resident and a teacher in North Shore and one of the volunteers who convenes meetings monthly for Nourishing Networks here in Bothell, Kenmore, and Woodinville. I was first drawn to Nourishing Networks because a colleague had asked me, "Where are the food banks in Bothell? And where do students get food in the summer?" And I didn't have an answer. I was embarrassed that I didn't know what services are here, and so that started my journey of being curious and asking questions. In the meantime, I've been able to meet coordinators and volunteers with many food banks, especially in our schools. Many of our schools have food pantries, food banks, or meal delivery programs. And they're all saying the same thing, that the need is growing, and there just aren't enough donations right now for the need. During our monthly virtual meetings, we strive to create collaborative partnerships by connecting volunteers, social services, churches, and advocates with special needs in the community, such as filling requests for food, financial support, and other necessities. We have a strong web of providers and advocates, and our web continues to grow each month.
We invite you to join this work in a variety of ways. You can join our monthly meetings on Zoom or reach out to us and get on our list so that you can read our monthly meeting notes to learn about specific needs in our community, as well as the resources shared by service providers. The website is nourishingnetworks.net. And if you're looking for a way to help, just please contact us for ideas of where the needs are great. I just think when we work together, we can make sure that everyone in Bothell and beyond, all the residents, including North Shore students, have the food and support that they need.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the proclamation.
All right, we have one more proclamation, and this one is fun because councilmembers Alderks and Dodd and I got to go up and speak to a middle school class about something they are working on, a kindness initiative. And it is World Kindness Week. So, whereas World Kindness Day is an international observance that was formed in 1998 to promote kindness throughout the world, and whereas the second week in November is World Kindness Week, which provides us the opportunity to reflect upon and model one of the most important and unifying human principles. And whereas both large and small acts of kindness have the potential to promote caring and belonging and is a crucial quality that brings people of every walk of life together. And whereas the North Shore School District and the City of Bothell seek to highlight good deeds in our schools and community and focus on the positive influence and common thread of kindness. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the North Shore School District and the City of Bothell do hereby proclaim the second week in November 2023 as World Kindness Week in Bothell and ask community members and students to join us in building a kinder and more compassionate school district and community. And I believe we have Jen Ernstner and students from Skyview Middle School. Are they virtual? Are they here? Or are they not? All right. It does not look like we do. So, we will move on to staff briefings. And we have a staff briefing for the Downtown Transition Affordable Housing Overlay Comprehensive Plan Site-Specific Rezone and Code Amendments. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As we warm up for a staff briefing, I just want to note that the purpose of the briefing tonight is to prepare both council and the community for what's coming next. On December 5th, before you, will be consideration of the Downtown Transition Affordable Housing Overlay Comprehensive Plan Amendment as well as site-specific rezone and code amendments. As council knows, some of those, the rezone, is also something that is quasi-judicial and just for the benefit of people who are watching. While the City Council is elected to be representatives of the community, there are times in some decisions where they're asked to serve in a quasi-judicial role as judges where, instead of hearing from the community, they actually have to put a box around things and look at a case itself. So, tonight, though, while we are not going to get into a ton of details on this, what's coming to you in December, we did want to have a bridge, though, of we've had conversations this year and to know what's coming. I'm also going to note, too, with a little additional introduction, is that we are joined tonight by our senior planner, Dave Boyd, who is going to present, and if there are any questions about the process, he can answer. What I want to note is that Dave is before us tonight, but on December 5th, when we have our meeting, he may be. That'll be his choice because he'd be doing it in his own time. Dave, after 18-plus years, is going to be retiring from the city at the beginning of December. And so just want to note that this is his last scheduled presentation to you tonight, so enjoy it. And I want to thank Dave for the work he's done. Just as a little contextual tie to, this is almost a city manager report item at this point. But earlier today, we had visitors from a city in California, actually, who were here to do a site visit, looking at the downtown revitalization that's taken place, and they're embarking on implementing some things in their comprehensive plan. And their consultant told them Bothell's the place to look. So, I was very grateful that they picked a date when Dave is still with us and could be part of that conversation. And just, again, another reminder of the contributions he's made to the community. So, Dave, with that, that's a long introduction, probably one of the longer you've had. But thank you, and I'm going to turn things over to you.
Thank you. I wasn't expecting that, but I do appreciate it. I think City Manager Standard really covered pretty much what I had to say about the, as far as this update goes. But I will give a little bit of background. And actually, before I do that, I do want to mention that the group that was here today was from Rancho Cucamonga, California. And I wanted to say that just because it's really fun to say. And their consultant is the consultant that worked with us on the downtown plan. So, this effort, the Downtown Transition Affordable Housing Overlay Comprehensive Plan Site-Specific Rezone and Code Amendments, started back in mid-2021. So, this has been a long time going. Started with when Dave and Connie Drews approached us about an idea they had for rezoning five parcels of theirs for a potential future project. They submitted an application in October of '21. Council initiated those code amendments in February of '22. Planning Commission started work on it in October of '22 and made a recommendation in July of this year and reaffirmed that just this last October. So, I want to thank the Drews for their patience as we've worked through this. It does have some interesting elements to it that have made it somewhat complicated, as these things often do become. But we are getting close to the finish line, and I'm very confident that Jason Greenspan, the Director of the Department, and my replacement, Rebecca Sami, are going to be able to shepherd this through on December 5th, when we'll only be, they'll only be bringing to you the comprehensive plan and the site-specific rezone amendments. And then, assuming that those are approved, then in the first quarter of 2024, the code amendments will come before you. But in December and tonight, really, we're only discussing the comprehensive plan and the site-specific rezone amendments. And the one, I think, part of those amendments that I think is most pertinent is these are parcels that really are only feasibly accessible from the downtown streets, from the corner of 96th and Thor's. So, that's really the core reason why it does make sense to rezone these and bring them into the downtown subarea. So, with that, I thank you again for the recognition, and I'm hopeful that this will move forward smoothly.
You have that look like you want to say something.
I have to do this on the fly. Dave, I've known you for, like, ever, and I've watched you be put through the paces of being patient and taking time to explain things from civilians to people who are serving on commissions to council. And I just want to tell you thank you. I don't know how many trips you have planned to Idaho and beyond, but enjoy every one of them. And enjoy sleeping in. I don't know what that will be like for you, but thank you for what you've done for Bothell.
Thank you.
Oh, you're not done yet, Dave. Councilmember Dodd might have some possible questions about the Downtown Affordable Housing Overlay.
I was just going to say, as a former planning commissioner and as a council member, and even before that, as just a resident with a lot of questions and knowing not a lot about city planning, thank you for always being kind and approachable and patient. Really appreciate it, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to say anything that might make Dave blush?
Well, since we are not going to be seeing you later in this meeting, it's my turn. And it's just, it really has been, I really appreciate the fact that we've been able to work together on the Planning Commission and in council. Your voice will be missed in the city, but I also very much appreciate the work of the Community Development Department and just how it's growing and maturing. And I look forward to working with your replacement and you just having the best retirement you can dream up for yourself. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ditto. Thank you so much. I'll keep it short. So, thank you. Really appreciate you being here and educating the new guys, the new people, I guess, on things. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thanks for everything. And I hope the next time we see you, you have a sunburn and like a Hawaiian shirt on or something because you're relaxing so aggressively. But thank you for everything.
Thank you. And I will get out here to check out the progress, especially on the downtown plan. But since I won't be coming out here during the weeks, maybe I'll make it to some of those wine walks and beer walks and see some of you.
Let us know when you do.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next up is a city manager report.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. And if I can put you back to work, though, I wanted to give Deputy City Clerk Schaefer opportunity to bring up the Item 2A, the Public Engagement Opportunities. I think we have the correct slide.
Ah, yes. Perfect. We have the Winter Porchlight Parade. You can, tu-tu-tu, you can join and create dazzling light displays to help mark the many traditions being celebrated this winter, and registration opens today. We have the Bothell Community Resource Fair, where you can forge meaningful connections with local human services providers by stopping by the Bothell Library on November 18th from 1:30 to 4:30 p.m. And we have a Septic Sins Workshop because the things we get to do in local government are often so glamorous. You can join us online tomorrow night from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. to learn how to keep your septic system functioning as designed.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. So, tonight, I'd like to open up just with a reminder for the 2040 Council Vision that was adopted earlier this year. And again, the intent of the Council Vision was to be aspirational and look forward to what will Bothell be like in 2040. Looking at the introductory paragraph, there's five sentences that it just strikes me of how much work that we're seeing in tonight's meeting alone that has to do with that. So, I'd like to read it quickly. "For a day or a lifetime, no matter who you are or where you've come from, Bothell is everyone's hometown. We welcome new neighbors while respecting our history and those who have laid the foundation before us. From a time before incorporation, the indigenous caretakers of our lands set a high standard for environmental stewardship, and we honor that today. We care for each other, we respect each other, and we work together to ensure everyone feels safe and welcome. We grow and learn together to meet today's needs with an eye towards the future." So, with that, I have three items under the city manager report tonight that tie into a theme that we're seeing, both from the proclamations and through. First up, I would like to welcome our Police Chief, Ken Suberlich, to the microphone. As council may be aware, last week, the Bothell Police Department achieved reaccreditation from the Washington Association for Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, which was first received in 2015. Reaccreditation took place four years later in 2019, and we were due again this year, and I'm pleased to say that we have achieved that. The chief was going to- that we have achieved that. The chief was going to be giving thanks and praise to members of his team, and that's no surprise. And I want to give him the opportunity to that. But I do want to also acknowledge both the council contribution to that in terms of, again, the support that you've given to the police department, as well as some elements that I think do come through in the council vision, but also to Chief Suberlich and his leadership of the department, of setting the tone, of showing the importance of accreditation, but also just the day-to-day work in living out the mission of the police department. And it wouldn't be possible without him. That last sentence that I read talks about growing and learning together, and I truly believe that accreditation is a big part of growing and learning together. As the community changes, our police department continues to change. And again, that's through great leadership. So with that, I'll turn it over to our leader, Chief Suberlich.
Well, thank you for the kind words, City Manager Standard. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, city council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Frankly, I've missed you all. It seems like we haven't seen each other for a few weeks. As most of you are now aware, we are a state-accredited agency, and we've been that way for the past eight years. And as such, we have to re-accredit every four. To maintain our accreditation status, we participate in the WASPIC accreditation standard. The accreditation certification program is administered by WASPIC, the Washington Association of Sheriffs and Police Chiefs, and involves a multi-phase process over several months. It is a professional objective which subjects our agency to a demanding audit process that examines best practices, accountability, and organizational discipline. The accreditation process requires adherence to 148 different accreditation standards. Of the 311 police agencies and jails in Washington State, there are only 73 accredited police agencies, and we're one of those. For us, the reaccreditation process took place last spring, late last spring. And I am happy to say that we received what is called a clean site visit, meaning that there were no identifiable issues. And to be fair, about a third of the agencies that we witnessed at accreditation, I like to say they have to do the walk of shame, where they have to point out the things that they had to correct. And we were not one of those. And this is the third time that our agency has gone through this process, and we didn't have any issues whatsoever. And that is a heavy lift. At this time, I would like to recognize a couple of members of my team, if you would like to come forward. Without them, this process would have been much more difficult. Two of the members are here that I'd like to recognize, but there's also a third. We have Support Services Manager Grace Myers, who is amazing. And my operations captain, Darren Tempe, again, amazing, worked very diligently to get us through this process with a clean site visit. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Police Administrative Specialist Telay Antiveros, who did a massive amount of work. She is managing, she's herding cats. It's police officers and training records, you know, trying to get stuff in at the last minute. And she did a phenomenal job. The benefits of accreditation include operational effectiveness, balanced recruitment and employee practices, better records management, improved use of technology, focus on health and safety, training, code of conduct, prisoner security, and many more. But for me, the accreditation really boils down to keeping our community employees safe through proven best practices. And by doing this, we demonstrate our commitment to maintain and improve public trust. So with that, we are officially reaccredited for the next four years.
It's pretty.
So thank you.
All right. I have two more. Not as exciting as that. That's the topper. So you could hang on to that one. Second update is also related to council priority, council vision. So within the vision, there's also priority areas of how are we going to accomplish and move forward to 2040. One of those areas is economic vitality. So I wanted to share with council that tomorrow, the city is going to be launching a request for proposals that will be going from November 15th all the way through January 9th. And this is, we're seeking well-qualified firms to partner with to assist in the creation of an economic vitality plan to enhance business growth. So what does that mean? I just want to point out that aligned with the council priority, the work will include looking at strategies to identify and grow and retain Bothell-owned microenterprises, identify neighborhoods with potential economic generators, strategies that will bring abundant small commercial spaces and residential neighborhoods, as well as strategies to attract and retain our medium and large employers. So I want to put that on people's radars to help spread the word if anyone knows of a firm that might be interested or has an interest in that themselves. Again, that'll be posted on the city's website tomorrow. We'll be spreading the word. And then with the holidays coming, also, we want people to want to work with us. So we give plenty of time on those opportunities, and they'll be, again, running through the beginning of January. And then we'll be bringing results of that to the council, for sure. It's a council priority. You'll be hearing more about the work and who we select, and maybe even a contract to approve. But more importantly, engaging with the community, with our businesses, and with our neighborhoods to bring information together and see what could be, what the possibilities are. The final thing is, I wanted to let council know, we've been monitoring some behavior at other agencies in our area, of which there has been a phenomenon of visitor comment being misused and exploited to prolongate hate speech and anti-Semitic behavior. We've been aware of this for the last month, and many of our neighboring jurisdictions have been caught up in this, as have cities all up and down the West Coast. So this isn't just a local issue. This is an intentional act that someone or someones are behind. One of the things that we've been watching for, then, is to see if people are joining us on Zoom. And we haven't had that yet. But we also don't really want to keep a door open for opportunities for such behavior here in Bothell. Before you tonight, I wanted to give some context of next week, we will be coming back with an update to the protocol manual, of which we had a study session in October. In addition to the study session, we are going to propose some draft language to tighten up the protocol manual around reminding people that, again, we want to hear from everyone. We are not going to restrict content of what people can say. But in the case of being able to limit just unnecessary hateful speech, we also want to have a way to cut that off if things go there. And that is up to the chair of the meeting to generate. And so what we're proposing is an addition of language that would limit topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. And again, that can be tight and loose, planned, future. Again, what we want is, we want feedback about Bothell. It's not whether you agree with the city, with the council, with staff. You don't have to. That's fine. But we want to make sure that it stays relevant to Bothell. So before you tonight is a motion to adopt a temporary rule that would apply those items. I've drafted a motion and left a document up on the dais for anyone who wants to consider it. Happy to answer questions, but I also want the public to know, again, anytime that we change public comment rules, people might wonder what's behind this. And again, the purpose behind this is, again, we want to keep hate speech out of Bothell. Happy to answer any questions, or if the council would like to enact a temporary rule, they can do so by motion and a vote tonight.
All right. Thank you, city manager. So I move to adopt a temporary rule applying to item six, public comment, and nine, public hearings, limiting public comments to topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker's comments being suspended.
Second.
All right. I've got a motion from Deputy Mayor Alcabra, and a second from Councilmember Zornz. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councilmember Aldrich?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to thank the city interim city attorney, the city manager, for preparing this motion for us for tonight, so that we can kind of head off some of these just really distressing interactions that are coming, possibly not even from our own community. So thank you for doing this.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that as well. The volume of hate that we are hearing on a national and international level is a little bit terrifying. And I appreciate that our staff is being forward-thinking and circumventing unnecessary trouble in a world that's already quite conflicted. So thank you for helping us with this.
I'd just like to echo that. Thanks to staff for bringing this before something happened here, because antisemitism, racism, and hate speech are not welcome here. And I would encourage the clerks to have a quick hook. Like, if you want to look at me, go for it. But like, if you start hearing that kind of thing, like, just know that I will be wanting it gone. And with that said, city clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 5-0, with councilmembers Minkie and McNeil absent and excused.
Fantastic. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. I appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have council committee reports. All right. Seeing none?
I have them. Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
You missed my light.
Councilmember Aldrich.
And so these are possibly a little outdated now, so there may have been updates beyond these updates. On October 19th, city manager Kyle Standard and I attended the regional crisis response principals' assembly. We got a hiring update. There were four open positions at the time, but they're definitely working on becoming fully staffed. The NORCOM transition had not yet been completed, but it definitely has been completed since then. At that meeting, we also reviewed the inter-local agreement and discussed which date is considered the end of year one, since we know that there are other cities that are interested in joining Racer. And it was determined that April 2024 would be considered the end of year one for Racer, before those conversations could be had with other municipalities. The community visioning process brought some really important feedback to the community or to the program. One in particular was the ability to downgrade a call from 911 to 988, if that's appropriate. And then there was an update on the Crisis Care Center that Connections and Evergreen are working together, and it's moving forward. So that is the update for Racer. Next up, on same day, on October 19th, there was a meeting of the North King County Coalition on Homelessness. We got an update from the Regional Homelessness Authority. There were two applicants for emergency winter shelter, the RFP that went out. One had a location, and the other one was working on siting. There was a request for, were there locations in North King County who might be willing to partner with the organization that could provide the services but needed a site? And I hope that there may be future updates on that soon. The grant writing 101 process, is that mine? Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh-oh, what happened?
Sorry.
Thanks for looking out for us. So the Veterans Senior Human Service Levy Staff, oh, I actually got that acronym all by myself, held a grant writing 101 class for providers. There was an Oaks Shelter update from Lake City Partners Ending Homelessness. They are at full capacity, as usual. They were like, they probably began accepting new referrals. Things are steady. And I've heard some really fantastic updates from them recently, including something like 17 people moved into, out of the shelter into housing, and that they're on track for something like a third of their census being moved into housing in one month's time, because some of the work that the RHA has been doing is really starting to click along and get things moving. So some successes that we can celebrate there. Thank you for hearing my updates.
Thank you for giving your updates. That was very encouraging. All right. Seeing no more, we'll move on to public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make note of items requiring follow-ups. City clerk?
Thank you, Mayor Thompson. We received three written comments. The first one was from Andrew Nelson, who wrote about regarding the World Kindness Week proclamation. Tamara Wood wrote regarding AB 23174, the study session on the climate element. And Ang Agard wrote in regarding AB 23174, the study session on the climate element. And she is also here in the audience, I believe, to speak. So Ms. Agard, you are the first one up, if you'd like to come to the podium.
You see what I have. Thank you for the bag that came at the open house. And I'm looking forward not only to using the bag, but for the results that came. It was a very ambitious program, and lots of people attended, and look forward to hearing the results from it. My comments tonight are to the section in the pocket on the climate change. I'm asking that you add some additional policies under the Fish and Wildlife section and under the Wetlands section. Under Fish and Wildlife, future fish and wildlife corridors, particularly those for the Sumamish River, will result in larger riparian buffers with trees to provide sufficient shade to cool the river stream and meet state water quality standards for temperature and dissolved oxygen. Secondly, WDFW currently supports an ecological lift increase above known net loss standard, a net gain standard. And this net gain standard should be addressed not only in this climate section, but in the best available science. And under Wetlands, you should retain the current language that ensures no net loss of wetland function. The proposed language gives the ability for applicants and developments to use off-site areas, such as mitigation banks and federally approved INLU programs, without fully applying mitigation sequencing to their projects. That is, it may allow applicants to provide whatever mitigation could be done on site, and the net difference could be provided by purchase of credits from a bank or INLU programs. This would not be a good solution. No project for wetlands that has impacts to fish-bearing waters and their buffers should be mitigated at off-site locations. Using restoration sites deemed necessary for compensatory mitigation will not lead to increase in functions in areas necessary to support salmon. And when compensatory mitigation is proposed within the same sub-drainage basin, add the word sub-basin to this. For example, Horse Creek supports Samoan populations, and any compensatory mitigation within the Horse Creek sub-basin should be compensated within this sub-basin, not the larger drainage basin, or indeed the watershed, for example, in Redmond. And finally, I want to add this picture of the Kocane salmon to my testimony, and I'll give it to Robin. This Kocane salmon is now spawning up at 240th in North Creek, and you can go see it yourself if you go to the North Creek Parkway on the west side of the bridge that crosses North Creek, and you will see the Kocane salmon there any sunny day.
Thank you, Ms. Agard. We appreciate it. Next up, we have Ruth Burris.
And while Ruth is coming to the, I forgot to state that public comment will each have three minutes. So you'll see the light, and it will turn yellow at 30 seconds. Appreciate that.
It's a great bag.
It's a great bag.
Hello, I'm here to address affordable housing. I happen to be a resident at Canyon Park Mobile Park, 228th and 31st. And we are part of the Mobile Home Park overlay, and just wanted to lobby to have that stay in place. I know that the comprehensive plan is completely being reviewed, and so we're concerned. We've had some changes in our park ownership this last year, and the folks that have bought it also bought a property in Kenmore nine months before us, and we have seen changes to their rent, which, for us, will be a 50% increase in just over one year. So, many of us, there's 160 homes, it is a senior park, 55 and over, and many of us are older than me, and therefore are on fixed incomes that are fixed a long time ago. So, a 50% increase in their rent is not workable for them, and as well as all the other, you know, things going on these days. So, what we'd like to do, or ask for, is for Bothell to develop a Tenant Protection Act of some sort. And in order to, what happens for us is, we get notices in March for a June increase, which, in government timing, is no timing at all, to be able to come up with some sort of protection for us. So, I'm suggesting that maybe a moratorium while you study that could be put into effect. It could have cost of living increases in it, that sort of thing, so that the landowners also don't feel like they're being victimized. I did give you a letter, or one was passed out, that I gave to the mayor a bit ago, that has some more details in it. But we would just really appreciate any help that you can give us on that. I'm just looking to see if I screwed up and forgot anything. I think not. Thank you so much. And my contact information is on there in case you've got some questions, or if you want to tell me a great way to get ahold of you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Whitney Nega-Bauer.
Good evening. My name is Whitney Nega-Bauer, and I'd like to comment on the study session regarding climate, natural environment, parks, and shoreline elements as an individual resident. I believe we've already taken steps to build a city that will be inclusive and protect natural resources. Updating the City of Bothell's comprehensive plan gives us the opportunity to make improvements to decisions that really add up over time. Within the climate element, tree canopy is mentioned as a way to build resilience in our community. And I'm bringing a question tonight, is if we could add an urban tree canopy action plan, or urban forestry action plan with specific goals that could be specifically called out in this section of the comprehensive plan. The agenda also asks for some clarification on what information could be included in the parks element, and I wanted to highlight a few items that I believe to be unique to our city. Parks and green spaces are already important to our community, and will become even more critical as our city grows, both in regards to climate, but also in regards to human health. Access to parks is associated with decreased health complaints, improved blood pressure and cholesterol levels, reduced stress, improved general health perceptions, and a greater ability to face problems, according to the National Recreation and Park Association. Our parks represent areas where tree canopy can be increased, trail connections can provide alternatives to driving, and where our community can learn about stewardship and potentially have access to fresh produce in the form of future community gardens. Bothell is unique in that we have local grassroots stewardship groups that partner with the city. These partnerships could continue to grow, providing opportunities for residents in improving natural habitat function. Our community currently faces challenges in reaching established metrics for acreage of parks per capita and accessibility within our parks. In regard to the best available science document, I'd like to encourage the city to utilize the site potential tree height for riparian buffers wherever possible, and to also continue discussions regarding net ecological gain policies in lieu of no net loss, or offering incentives to property owners to restore degraded habitat where possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Terry Loesch.
It's Loesch. City clerk?
Good evening, Mayor, council. I rise to speak to the matter on our agenda tonight, I think, pertaining to multiple units in single-family neighborhoods. You know, this would change the character of our city, and I think it is ill-advised that we should do so just through the council. I think it should be something that's submitted to the population in a ballot measure. Although we're a free-market economy, just because we have more units doesn't necessarily mean they're going to be affordable units. We can't dictate rents. Property rights are protected under the U.S. Constitution, and we don't have a way to moderate increases or to dictate what people expect is the return for their property. If we want affordable housing, we should build it. We have some surplus lands, and we should make it an attractive investment for a developer to build affordable housing, small square-footage units that people can afford to buy, and then hold as rental units when they move on. But this idea of allowing multiple units in single-family neighborhoods invites, of course, renters to be in some of those units, and if anybody that's ever owned a residential property knows that there's always a problem tenant somewhere. And if you've got a problem tenant, that means that your income is affected, and you may not always have resources to keep that property up. So, we're inviting blight in our otherwise normal neighborhoods. Plus, invariably, somebody's going to get the idea that we should have higher property taxes because of the availability of building multiple on that parcel, so, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have signed up to speak, Mayor Thompson. However, if anybody else in the audience wishes to speak, please step to the podium, state your name, and y'all have three minutes. If you are in the virtual audience, please use the raise hand function, and we will panel you in when we get to you.
My name's Mark Swanson. I've been a resident in Bothell for 33 years, bought a house in West Hill in 1994, live there ever since. I'm also the first wind pioneer in Washington State. Me and my business partner created the first wind farm in Goldendale back in 1994 as a business. In 2000, it was executed, and so I'm familiar with and concerned about the environment. Now, a couple of housekeeping actions here. In acknowledgement of the Type 2 Diabetes Proclamation, I just want to put out the factoid that a plain croissant has 200 calories, has a glycemic index of 71. Table sugar has a glycemic index of 56. So, just as a factoid to put out there, I've been taking care of my mom's Type 2 diabetes for 30 years. It's a surprise to me, it's healthier to have five tablespoons of white sugar than it is to eat a plain croissant with butter. Who knew? Now, on November 1st, the Planning Commission had a rather confused man from Burke Consulting, because he didn't know where to go. He was asking questions, trying to get directions, and one of our planning commissioners, Fabio Westerbeck, Kerry Westerbeck, totally ignored that at our open house, the people in the Red Barn area were concerned about open spaces and wetlands. Nobody addressed it. He told the Burke consultant, hey, what we need is, we need to increase density up there in the Red Barn area so that we can keep two businesses that are empty right now, 20,000 square feet of retail space, he's willing to put a whole bunch of apartments up there, which is against a comprehensive plan. The changes you're going to vote on tonight violate our current comprehensive plan, which brings me to this. We have not had a functioning, what do you call it, quorum in either the Planning Commission or this city council for over two years because of a hopelessly mired conflict of interest due to the BOPAP infiltration into this city government. I'm asking for the resignation of Mayor Thompson tonight. I'm asking for the resignation of Amanda Dodd tonight before next week.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. That's all I have signed up to speak. Is there anybody else who wishes to? Please step to the podium. Y'all have three minutes. And state your name.
Hi, Tamara Wood. I also did a written comment. So, I, my name's Tamara Wood. I'm a recent Cascadia grad, and actually a student of Dr. Piggay. So, it was really nice to see him here today. I am now at U of Bothell, pursuing a degree in environmental studies with a minor Ecological Restoration and American Indian Studies. I also work as a groundskeeper on a restoration site along North Creek. I am here today because I just so happen to be researching this actual intersection of environmental law and climate change, and it's really awesome to be here, and I'm here to study and learn from y'all, and share some of the notes I had when I was reading over the packet, and reading over some of, comparing it with the Bothell Urban Canopy Report. So, I also just wanted to thank you all for being, I'm very grateful to the city staff for compiling this information and finding the best available science. It's a very ever-changing world, and, you know, where we see a lot of these climate scenarios fluctuate from day to day. I also want to thank our elected officials who are concerned with the world that our children will be facing 20 years from now. And I'm a mother of two, so yes, I have my roots down here. It's important to me. A couple of things I wanted to discuss. One, I really thought that what Anne said about the language around no net loss was important, and I think that we should be really mindful about the semantics and how we're wording that, because I don't believe that INLU replacement on trees or wetlands is an adequate replacement. I also wanted to discuss funding and some accountability to the recommendations. So, parks and recreation needs more funding, period. It's always the first to get cut. Instead of funding with a levy solely, I would recommend researching options for Bothell to start recovering some BNO tax to fundraise for many of these initiatives. We have billions of dollars flowing through Bothell, especially at the many biotech companies in the central region, creating health risks in the wetlands and through commuter traffic. It's just a very high-sensitive area, and we should be really thinking about that. So, I was typing this out between classes, so it's a little bit scattered. I also really thought that we could push forward initiatives similar to what Kirkland has right now, the citizen stewardship program, which would really link a lot of the government, non-government agencies, and our citizens to be able to feel invested in the work that we're doing in the community in terms of like restoration, so much like what Will Scouts is doing, and Friends of the North Creek Forest. So, yeah, I think my time's up, so.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? Please step to the podium. That's all I have, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, city clerk. Moving on to projected agenda discussion. Council members? Seeing none, I would love to accept a motion to, excuse me, pass the consent agenda.
I motioned to approve the consent agenda.
Second? I've got a motion from Councilmember Alderks, and a second from Deputy Mayor Alcabra to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, city clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmembers Orange?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 5-0 with councilmembers Minkie and McNeil absent and excused.
All right, moving on to Agenda Bill 23172, the public hearing to consider ordinance setting the 2024 property tax levy for King and Snohomish Counties. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and as you noted, and as noted at the top of the agenda, we have reversed the order of the public hearings based on what was on the published agenda, so thank you for the flexibility. The first public hearing we have tonight, as you mentioned, is on setting 2024 property tax levy rates. This was last discussed with council on October 17th, 2023, and it was also part of the anticipated biennial budget, which was adopted last December, December 6, 2022. With us tonight is Kwan Wong, and we do have a number of finance staff members that will be introduced to through this first presentation and the next one as well, with both public hearings. And just as a reminder, council is not being asked for any action tonight. This will be coming back to you next week. Tonight's purpose of the public hearing is to hear from the community, to help inform council decision next week. With that, I'll turn things over to Kwan.
And I would like to open the public hearing. Go ahead. Sorry, I just have to do that.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and city council members. My name is Kwan Wong. Along with me is my senior finance analysts. So, we will ask you to open the public hearing, as you did, for setting the King County and Snohomish County property tax levies for 2024. So, just to give you the highlights of what's coming before you next week, and for the public as well. So, the 2024 King County and Snohomish County property tax levies, this is what we will submit on an annual basis due to the King and Snohomish Counties by November 30, 2023. The adopted budget already assumed a 24 property tax levy that includes a 1% increase plus new construction. The estimated levy rate is 1.69 cents per 1,000 of assessed value, or about $1,641 on a median property price of $969,000. So, the 1% increase over the 2023 levy is approximately $14.70 annually for, again, the median price home of $969,000. I think the two-pipe charts are familiar to you. So, the majority of the property tax, actually, they go to school districts. For Bothell, in the Snohomish portion, it's only about 20%. And for the King County property tax, about 18% would come to Bothell. And again, the majority of the property tax are going to the school districts. So, with that summary, we want to hear from the public about their input on the property tax before us.
Does council have any questions before we do that? No? Go ahead.
I just have a comment. Reading through the packet, I saw that staff recommended that levy be increased only by 1% for 2024, with the difference retained as a bank capacity going forward. And my first thought is, is there any way to note to future Bothell council not to be cavalier with banked funds, because it's not money that's easily gained, and it's easily spent? So, I'm joking, but it would be nice to put a comment of, if we banked money.
Councilmember, I think that would be something that, you know, if council- Councilmember, I think that would be something that, you know, if council wants to make that expression next week as you're voting on this matter, that would be the appropriate timing, I think, for tonight. What we're trying to do is hear from the community.
Okay.
All right. Do we have anybody sign up for public comment? City Clerk?
We do not. However, if anybody's in the audience and wishes to speak to this, please step to the podium, or if you're in the virtual, please raise your, use the raise hand function. Please state your name when you get to the podium.
My name's Terry Loesch. So we see all of this new construction, and, you know, they're taking out single-family dwellings and they're putting up multiple units. That has to be a tremendous increase in revenue, taxable revenue. And I would imagine that what we should probably know is what the actual receipts are this year versus last year. If income, tax income to the city is going up, why should we be worried about raising a tax levy?
Thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Well, I am going to close the public hearing, and we will see you again next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is Agenda Bill 23171, public hearing to consider 2023, 2024 mid-biennium budget amendments and related items. City Manager?
All right. So Kwan Wong, our finance director, will be staying with us, and, but very similarly, this was also part of the discussion back on October 17th. Again, the intent is to hear from the community. No action being sought tonight. We will again take that up at a later time. But I'm going to turn things back over to Kwan.
And I'm going to do the same thing I did last time and open the public hearing now.
I want to introduce another senior finance analyst, Ricky Liang, who's joining us today for part of the presentation. So today or tonight, we are asking you, again, to hold another public hearing to receive input on the 23, 24 mid-biennium budget amendments. As we are approaching the end of the first year of the biennium, we are in a very good financial position. So what's coming before you in the next month or so, really, the approach is housekeeping items. We divide those into really three buckets. The first one is general fund operating adjustments. They include contract with the NOKCOM for all police 911 dispatch service that you made the decision several months ago, and also to update the citywide position list. The second bucket is the capital project and program. We have budget and schedule updates for those projects. And the third bucket is the 2024 fee schedule. Most of the increases are by the CPI at about 4.5% based on the June index. Some highlights on the CIP budget and schedule updates. The first one is there are about 10 projects exceeded the original cost estimates. So we are coming to the council for approval to have additional funding that has been secured or city funding that has been reallocated. The second category are the projects, about seven of them, they were anticipated to have been spent in 2022, but we are going to spend them in the 23, 24 biennium. The last category are some of the major projects. The first one is the 35th Avenue Southeast Drainage Improvements. We got a public work trust fund loan in place of a grant. The second big project is a backup power generator at Bothell Operating Center. We got a state grant to pay for that. And the last, but not least, is the fire station replacement training tower project. So moving forward, I will turn the mic to Ricky.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor. And, oh, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. So I am Ricky from the Finance Department. So I'll be going over the 2024 fee schedule. I'll bring this closer. So fees are typically updated annually. Objective, the objective is to achieve cost recovery where feasible, and we, staff is proposing 2024 fee schedule increases by CPI, which is 4.5% with three exceptions. Some exceptions are fees limited by statute, fees with market considerations, for example, CPR classes, and fees where departmental cost analysis determines a non-CPI change is needed, and also certain fees remain unchanged, such as public records, animal licenses, and parks and recreation. Or they're also reduced, for example, school impact fees. Some examples of the changes include emergency management in public education. The market considerations and course costs are the reasons for the increase. For example, adult and child CPR with AED, that class is increased from 358 to 520. As for the fire department, the response operations, the median charge for, versus other regional agencies, for example, EMS transport increased from 675 to $900 for insurance reimbursement. And as for water and sewer utility fees, city hydrant meter deposit increased from 1,500 to 3,200 due to replacement cost or damaged equipment. And for parks and recreation, picnic shelters, amphitheaters at the Park at Bothell Landing, and field rentals for tournaments remain unchanged.
So with that summary, we are asking the public to give us input on the mid-biennium budget, and then for the council to close the public hearing afterward.
City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
We do not have anybody signed up to speak. However, if you wish to speak, please step to the podium or raise your hand in the virtual audience, and you'll have three minutes. We don't have anybody. Mayor Thompson?
All right. Thank you. Next week it is. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. We, next up, we have a study session. I'm just going to look around. Do we want to take a break before the study sessions? Seeing lots of nodding. It is 7:18. We are going to take a 15-minute break. We will be back here at 7:33, if I'm doing my math right. You know, it's funny, sometimes you think 15 minutes, like, wow, that's a really long break, and then you take a break and you blink, and it's been 15 minutes. All right, we are here for two study sessions tonight. The first one is Agenda Bill 23173, study session on 2024 utility and facility charge rates. City Manager?
All right. Well, council, remember a recent conversation that we had on this, generally on utility rate topics, and tonight we're back again to have a conversation, follow-up, and I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Boyd Benson. I will note, too, there was some reference to voting coming up tonight, and other than your consent calendar, and we did do a motion, there's, there's no, no vote. So again, this is another item not for action, it's for discussion over all utility rates. It'll be coming on December 5th for, for a vote in a public hearing next week, but just to reiterate, no decisions tonight. Boyd, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll be going over briefly some proposed facility charges for 2024. Next slide, please. With us tonight, we have Tagi Akar from the FCS Group. So this item presents 2024 water and sewer capital facility charges. We're looking to enact a new small dwelling unit facility charge. We'll be discussing that. At this time, we're only seeking input from City Council. This, this supports the fee resolution that'll be also coming back in, on December 5th. No formal actions being requested. Next slide. So just as a brief overview, this has been a bit of a process. We're trying to take many small touchpoints as opposed to a large touchpoint. So we first brought items before you on July 18th. We talked about outreach discount programs. We had discussions whether rates should be based on paying for absolute usage or size of homes. We discussed nonutility funds funding utilities. We came back on October 3rd for a study session about revenue requirements, and this is the meat of the 2024 utility rate update work, where we understand our revenue and expenses through the next foreseeable future. And we also brought in some preliminary municipal code updates. Tonight, we'll be talking about capital facility charges. In general, these are raised by CPI, Consumer Price Index. This year, it's 4.5%. So when Ricky was talking about the fee schedule, that's what we'll see for the capital facility charges. But you'll see added that new small dwelling unit water and sewer facility charge. forthcoming, we'll have a public hearing on rates and the code updates on November 21st, and then if all goes as planned, we'll have December 5th rate and code consideration for adoption and also the fee resolution. And if that all goes ahead as planned, these will become effective January 1st, 2024. So we have two slides with, with, with information and then a kind of a summary. So in overview, capital facility charges are one-time fees. These are to buy into the system. This system has value for water sewer storm, and when you, we develop, you buy into that system. You also pay for your proportionate shares of future projects to expand capacity and maintain our system. The 2024 CFC update, I've kind of already discussed that, but currently, the lowest facility charges for sewer and water are based on a 3/4-inch water meter. So if you're a residential unit with three bedrooms and three bathrooms, and you don't have a fire extinguisher, a fire system, you may have a 3/4-inch meter. If you're an ADU with a single bathroom and a single kitchen, small kitchen, you still have a 3/4-inch meter. It's the smallest meter. It's out there, we don't have a half-inch meter. So because of that, we wanted to look at, well, is that facility charge burden appropriate for these smaller uses? It's going to be the same meter or the same size pipe that's leaving for sewer, but is that facility charge appropriate? And what we looked at is actually basing facility charges on fixture counts. So when a project comes in, if it's a three-bedroom, three-bathroom unit, you'll count up the fixtures in the bathroom, and there are forms for this, and you'll count up for water, it's hose bibs, it's fire suppression, it's, it's, it's everything, anything that consumes water. For sewer, it's anything goes down the drain. And those numbers, we'll look at the next slide, that they, they help understand what size meter you might need. So if you have a very, if you have a medium-sized home with, with normal usage, if you turned on all the taps at one time, I'm kind of exaggerating here, but for understanding, if you turn all the taps on at one time, you can get the water you need out of a 3/4-inch meter. If you add extra bathrooms, or kitchens, or other hose bibs, or a fire suppression system, you may have to put in a larger meter to actually supply the flow. So it really is the, the meter size and the facility charge based on the meter size is a, is a proxy for peak demand use. And that's important for us because that's how we size our water mains. So it was clear early on from council that we wanted to look at rates as what you actually use and bill, and then facility charges is what is your burden on the system. So we think this fixture count calculation is the best way to look at that. Part of this is for equity. We want to make sure that when people buy into the system, they're buying into the fair share of system, and it also does lower barriers to affordability with middle housing, ADUs, and the rest. And the best part about this, on a utility fund side, is it's a very small impact to the utility fund. Tagi, anything to add about facility charges?
I would just add that, you know, we've seen this become a trend in water and sewer utilities throughout the state. More and more cities are looking into this, more and more water and sewer districts are looking into this, and while not a requirement for facility charges, recently became state law that this type of consideration is a requirement for impact fees. So this is the same type of approach to provide that equity that Boyd is talking about.
Thank you. And then these, these funds fund projects. So on the left up there, you can see some photos from the Valhall Utility Project. You don't see pipe that often of this type go in, in a nice, you know, setting like this, it's usually a closed construction site, but the work this funds, it provides resiliency, it provides lower maintenance. So on the left, you'll see a water main pipe, and it basically is a bell and spigot where you push the two pipes together. That's typical construction. What Bothell requires is that that joint, it's restrained. So once you put those bell and spigots together, you can't take them apart. So under a seismic event, our older pipes have the potential to separate, newer pipes don't. So not only are they, they good, strong ductal iron instead of AC, but they're restrained. And it's the same with those valves. You can see that they're actually bolted to that short stub of pipe. Older was just push-on fittings, mechanical joints. So I thought that was kind of neat to see. So these are the type of projects that facility charges pay for. Next slide, please.
I really appreciate you providing the color about that. Like, that's really interesting. Thank you.
This is always our favorite part of your presentation, when you like show us what's underground.
These get pretty boring, so I tried to find some cool ones. So for calculation summary, and this is our last substantive slide, for this small dwelling unit category, it's one, it's a category, so it could have a range of fixtures. Right now, a 3/4-inch meter category facility charge is 0 to 37 fixture counts. This small dwelling unit would have a 0 to 17. So it's, it's a range, it's a category, and that way, we're, it's, it's, it's not feasible for us to have individual charges for a fixture count of 18 or 16 or 15, but we can make a range. So what we're looking at is reduced fixture count relates to reduce burden, reduce buy into the system, and reduce share of future expansion projects. And for water, that is, like I said, it's 17 fixtures. And what that means for a home is it is one bathroom with a sink, shower, tub. It is a kitchen with all the kitchen items, the, the sink, the dishwasher, the rest. It is laundry, and it's, I think we added one hose bib to that. So what we're saying is if someone has a small dwelling unit, like an ADU or something like that, and it has really reduced potential peak flows, it'll still get a 3/4-inch meter, but we'd have this small dwelling unit charge for, to 17 fixture counts. And as you see by that summary table, it reduces the facility charge considerably. It's, it's about half. For sewer, it's, it's a little more squirrely on this. King County actually has, I think, six categories now, five or six categories for different. They have a large house, a standard-size house, a small house. They have a multifamily, they have an ADU, and I think they have one more. We're not proposing to go to that because typically what we see is with those type of units, once you get away from a single unit, you go to a different sheet and you actually count up all the fixtures and you charge by that. So this is just a small dwelling unit for, for sewer. And so what we're looking at there is typically, it's, it's 20 or above for residential, and when you count up the sewer fixtures for a small home with one kitchen, one bathroom, and laundry, that's 14 sewer fixtures. And so what that looks like is about a 30% reduction in our facility charge for sewer. The costs up there are in 2023 rates, they'll be increased by the 4.5% per CPI, and I know some of you really like to check math, which is good. You'll see that that 17 to 37 for water, that .46 is applied only to the city portion. Our water facility charge includes $1,081 that goes to SPU. So when you, when you add that all together, it's to be .53. And as Tagi mentioned, we're seeing other jurisdictions doing similar actions. Like I said, the current King County wastewater facility charge sheet for residential has many units. We looked at going to that, but we just don't have that, that breadth of, of use. Any comments on small?
Got it well.
Okay, thank you. And then I thought this is interesting because this is, this show is old versus new. On the left, that's a brick catch basin. I don't, you see next to the person's foot, you can see the bricks. It's not the best photo, and so... And so in Valhalla, the storm facility charges are paying for bringing some of these catch basins up to to standard. And it's not because we don't like brick, but brick fails, you have to re-mortar it and the rest, and and it's it's sometimes difficult to clean. You can you can pull the mortar out when you suck out the sediment. So they're replacing with with PVC pipe and and new catch basins. Next slide, please. So that's it. So we're not asking for formal council action tonight. This is a brief presentation to help inform you about the proposed fee updates that you'll see on December 5th. Any questions about this information?
Oh, thank you. Okay, I got a light on.
I know, I didn't see it.
Okay, I was like, we're, I'm looking for lights, too. I really appreciate this presentation, and my big question coming into this study session tonight was, was how are you going to figure out a way to to measure smaller units? And I think that this reduced fixture count makes a lot of sense. I think you've explained it really well. So I don't actually have questions. I'm just grateful that we like asked you to help us figure something out, and you've come back with something that makes a lot of sense. And so I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, quickly. I'm guessing from what you've said that other municipalities have done the fixture count kind of, or no, yes, no? I don't know who thought of it. It was brilliant.
I'm not sure either, but it was one of these group things. I think you had input. It may have been one of our development review engineers, but it just came up as how can we measure this? Because it's really challenging. I actually don't agree with just based on house size, because you could have a big house with very few fixtures, or you could have a small house with a lot of fixtures. So this really is in response to what council said. We want people to pay for what they use. You could have a small home that uses a lot of water, but it's not going to be peak flow. It's not a big burden as opposed to a a large home that could have a big flow. So yeah, so it was everyone working together.
I will have to tell you that in today's standards, we have a small home, raised five kids in it. We had two bathrooms, upstairs and downstairs. No one wanted to walk downstairs to the bathroom, so all seven of us shared one small bathroom. And so you can, I know experientially, you can have small space and a lot of people use a lot of water. So I know that when we asked you to come up with something fair, you know, how how closely can you approximate something that's fair? But this made a lot of sense, and thank you for explaining it. I do have one question. In the fixture fixture count, you talked about fire suppression as one of those things. Does that, is that the whole system, or how many sprinkler heads you have? I'm just curious. That's it.
So thank you for asking me about that, because I wasn't clear enough on that then. That's, we we don't actually count fire suppression as part of fixture counts, it's how we size meters. So it's one of those things that add up. So it is a type of fixture, but when we do our facility charges, we take that out of the equation. So if you have 37 fixtures for a home, and you'd get a three-quarter inch meter, if you add a suppression system that bumps you up to a one-inch meter, the code says we charge you a three-quarter inch facility charge, because that doesn't happen very often. And it's just the way the code has been written in the past, this predates most of us. And it's it's very equitable, because you don't want, you could have an ADU that's required to have fire suppression, and they bump up to a one-inch meter. That's probably, you know, a one-inch meter can 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 support two homes. So it's, yeah, so it's out of the equation, it's considered on meter size, but it's out of the equation for how we're looking at.
It's as if it was a three-quarter.
Yes, ma'am.
But because how often are you going to use, you know, please God, not very often, your fire suppression?
The less than your bathroom.
Right, right.
Right, it's also good, because those those combined fire suppression systems are the best thing ever. So it's very little cost at the start-up, and then if you were to, if you were to actually charge more for that, you could discourage that. So I think past council and and utility folks have thought that this is a good way to go. And SPU does the same thing. If you upsize from three-quarter to one inch, it's all the same charge.
Anything that to encourage people to be safe and proactive and thinking about their future is a good thing without penalties. So thanks.
I just wanted to say thanks as well. And I also was wondering, do you happen to know if any of the other utilities that serve Bothell residents have this kind of structure, or if they're, if you've heard that you're considering it, or?
I will say that Bothell is kind of ahead of the curve on this, looking at ADUs and middle housing, and part of that is out of self-preservation, because we want to make sure that 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 we know what's going to happen. Because if someone came at some point and said, we can't charge any facility charges for any of these things, and it's like, wait a second, who's paying that fair share of burden? So we think that this is the best way to go. Lower the barrier to affordability, make it clear-cut, and and people will know what they're they're required for. So we've shared this approach with Alderwood, NUD. We actually were on a Department of Commerce call about this, saying this is what the city of Bothell is considering if city council supports it. So we're we're kind of ahead of the curve on this, which I think is a good way, place to be.
So that inspires a question for me, like, if you are, I'm sorry. Sorry. I don't know.
Don't be sorry for who you are. We we like you.
I was just passed. But so this is kind of a novel proposal, and the word is spreading about it. What kind of like evaluation or study do you plan on doing? At what point to be like, so we tried this thing, and this is how it's going? And would you consider publishing it because there's not much on the internet about it?
As Tagi mentioned, other cities are looking at these type of approaches, and King County already has this. It just, I would say that King County's study, what FCSG did, is about an inch thick, and our study is is two fixture count sheets that demonstrate that this has a lower burden. So for us, it's just a simple way to go. But I think, and for me, that I would think other cities would think that's a good thing to to look at. So if if others asked about this, I think it'd be a really good way to go. Because NUD and Alderwood are in the same situation. And just as a aside, since this is a briefing or a study session, NUD and Alderwood, they don't have the same flexibility as the city, because they're not the authority having jurisdiction. They can't dictate what happens on the land. So right now, when we met with them eight months ago, it's every ADU gets a meter, every of these things get a meter, because someday the city may allow those to be sold separately. And so this type of approach is, if they embrace this as well, it's like, well, hopefully, if if that happens, which it should, because it's like House Bill 1110 allows you to subdivide for these smaller uses, right? You can, you can have cottage housing, or middle housing, or duplexes, or fourplexes, and you're required to allow subdivision to achieve that density. We don't want to see a fourplex go in for middle housing or any other type of use on a shared meter, and then all sudden property lines go down. It's going to be a condo or rental or something else. So I'm kind of, in a long, roundabout way, I I think others will be interested in the approach, and we've shared it, and it's simple, so I hope they think it's an okay way to go. Tagi, anything to add to this, or?
Yeah, just a couple of examples, you know, off the top of my head. The city of Redmond has something like this in place. City of Oak Harbor also has this type of smaller dwelling type of approach for facility charges. So it's, I wouldn't say it's common, but it's certainly an emerging trend, and a lot of other cities are, I think, in the process of at least considering how to address these types of smaller developments.
Yeah, but you'd say Bothell has an S, the best name, SDU for small dwelling unit?
SDU, yeah, it's pretty good. I'm just always so happy when we're like, we would like it to be a thing that does these things. And then you bring us back, like, here is exactly what that would look like, and it's just lovely. So thank you. I think Rami's saying he doesn't have anything to say. Do you have everything you need from us?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Awesome, fantastic. Next up, we have Agenda Bill 23174, Study Session on Climate, Natural, Environment, Parks, Shoreline Elements. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. So our second study session tonight is exactly that, and we've, we've heard a lot about our comprehensive plan lately. And also, again, we had our our recent open house. So tonight, though, is our first opportunity to be back, and as we heard from public comment tonight, too, there's obviously a great deal of interest in climate, natural, environment, park shoreline elements. We're going to be transitioning here for a second, getting the PowerPoint up, but I will introduce Senior Planner Kirsten Mott, and she has some further deductions to make during her presentation. But we'll give her here 30, 30 seconds to a minute, or however long she needs to get PowerPoint up and going, so.
I was going to say, Kyle, you're doing a great job of using more words than you probably want to, just to give them time.
That's right. It's what you do.
Kirsten is the only one who brings her own sign.
That is a good observation, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah.
I figure I had a lead for me.
Just like the minute you start pronouncing my name right, I won't have to do that anymore.
Believe me, I get it wrong. People say it wrong more often than they get it right, so you're not wrong.
All yours.
All right, so as City Manager mentioned, we're here to talk about the climate, natural, environment, shoreline, and parks elements. I'm joined by Lisa Gruder, Principal from Burke. She's been helping us with the climate element and the EIS work and a bunch of other stuff as well. And then at some point, we're going to have a just really quick intro with our Civics Park fellow, Emily, who's in the audience, but she'll come up and chat very briefly, just tell her about the program and herself for a little bit. So again, no specific action tonight, just trying to get feedback, as we have been on all these topics throughout the fall, as we continue to revise everything and work on developing new goals and policies. So timeline for this year, going to have to make, drafting a new one of this for next year, so look forward to that. Right now, we're at the very end of the year. We're reviewing, continuing to review existing conditions. That's going to go into the work on the environmental impact statement. We're starting to look at revisions to the goals and policies, starting the prep work for the development of the draft EIS, and continuing with ongoing engagement. Our big push for engagement with the open house has come to a close. We'll be coming back in December to give you kind of a wrap-up on how that went on the 12th. And then I have a KCLS session on Saturday. So if you want to come down, I'll be speaking for a little bit, mostly kind of just there to talk to folks and answer questions. And that work is, if you want to go to the whole thing, it's really great. I would recommend it. Also in January, on the 20th. And then we're starting, believe it or not, work on the next open house, which will be in March. So more to come in that space in terms of date and location over the next couple months. And then keep an eye out on the website for, the Engage Bothell website, for continuing engagement, which should have at least a portion of the hybrid version of the open house on there and up for folks to interact with over the next, I think, few weeks. And then I do have some revisions to this chart. The transportation element stuff is getting pushed to January, so just keep an eye out for new dates for that. Everything else is up to date, coming back here next week to talk about subareas, specifically Red Barn, AKA Country Village, AKA Bothell-Leffert Highway, AKA Lake Pleasant, new name, TBD. Human Services, which is now going to be a standalone element. Oh, no, sorry, that's later on. We're talking about Cultural Resources, currently known as the Historic Preservation Element, and Urban Design. And then December will all be about capital facilities, the new human service element, and utilities, as well as, like I mentioned, the October open house. So again, just trying to connect this all up to the the city vision that's been adopted as well. Tonight really touches on a lot of different topic areas, environmental stewardship, of course, show of one healthy way of life, economic vitality, and then moving folks in and around the city and connecting neighborhoods.
I wasn't going to call it that.
Oh, yeah. Apologies for that.
I promise you, she noticed that while she was reading it, and she's like, it's hard to go say anything. I hope not.
Hoping you just glossed through that. So overview for tonight, I'll be talking a little bit about best available science, what is it, what does it do, why do we do it? The environmental review process that we're working on through this project, that is the environmental impact statement process and the timeline. Lisa will be talking about the climate element development and some of the revisions to the draft that we've been working on with Planning Commission. I'll spend a little bit of time talking about update, proposed updates to the natural environment element, parks, recreation, and open space, and then touching a bit on the shoreline master program element, which was updated very recently, so we're not really proposing a ton of changes, but want to make sure that that topic is covered. So best available science. It is a GMA requirement, it has been since 1995. And what that mandate is, it's that we have to include a best available science as part of the guidance when we develop any policies or regulations relating to critical areas. So that includes, you know, pulling research from qualified professionals, using existing documented methodologies from various agencies. That might include the Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Ecology, and that all goes into informing how we develop these policies, and then ultimately regulatory changes associated with those. In terms of topic areas, there's five main topic areas, and these are also covered in our policies and regulations. So the SMP element, the natural environment element, and the climate element all go into informing the regulatory components, which for us is primarily titles 13 and title 14. 13 is our shoreline master plan title. It is the least fun one to implement, I can tell you from personal experience. It's very detailed, but it's very important. And then Title 14 is our, has a critical areas regulations and our SEPA regulations. So just wanted to provide a quick example of what the different components are within the best available science. So for wetlands, there's a section on functions and values, so that's looking at three main factors, water quality, the functionality of the hydrological system, and then the functionality of it as a habitat. And these also go into determining how we type wetlands in terms of the quality. This BAS also has an emphasis on climate change, especially as we're developing a new climate element. So there's a section on climate change and its potential impacts on wetlands, and then looking at protective measures for wetlands, both resiliency strategies, but it's also buffers and mitigation for those buffers and the wetland itself. And then on the right, I just thought I'd include a picture of, if you haven't looked at COB maps, what wetlands look like on COB maps, which is our City of Bothell Mapping Interactive Program. So the environmental review process. Yeah.
I was like, it's like COB maps, COB maps. Okay, yes.
It's one of those acronyms that you just say so often. Yeah, so I was like, wait, I should, I should spell that out. So what is an environmental impact statement? So as part of the SEPA review process, one of the things you do is determine whether or not a project's going to have significant or likely or adverse environmental impacts. Typically, for most projects, like current review projects, the SEPA determination is going to be either no significance or a mitigated determination of significance. If it's determined that there probably will be some kind of an impact, that's when the EIS process kind of gets triggered. And so what that does is it analyzes these potential impacts, proposes alternatives and possible mitigation, with the goal kind of arriving at what's sort of the best right answer for a project that achieves the aims of what we're trying to do, but mitigates potential impacts and assesses that. So in terms of the process, we issue the determination of significance, and that's what we did earlier with the scoping process. And that also includes initiating the participation with the public and all agencies, and that includes the tribes. And the goal of it is really to just improve the environmental quality of proposals and also provide that avenue for folks to comment and be engaged. It also provides environmental information for decision-makers and provides necessary information for taking action on a proposal. So the next main phase for us is going to be the draft environmental impact statement. We're going to be rolling that out with the draft of the plan. Right now, our timeline is for the very end of February, and that will have a 45-day comment period. And then this is just the visual of the timeline for that, like I mentioned. And again, right now, we're aiming, I believe, for February 29th, which is Leap Year Day, so it's kind of exciting. And with that, I'll maybe pause and make sure there's no questions before we move on to the climate element. All right, going once. All right, so I'm going to pass things over to Lisa to talk to us about the climate element.
Thank you. Good evening, council. We have a new element for Bothell, and the city started its work with a grant before it became a mandatory element. So was in good position to take the work conducted on climate resilience and fold it into a new element. The HB 1181 that mandates the element now calls for two sub-elements, a greenhouse gas emissions reduction sub-element and a resilience sub-element. So you'll see in the packet that the the draft policies are organized in that same way. Go to the next slide, please. So in terms of the Planning Commission review, they've had two meetings reviewing this element, and they've asked for some good wayfinding, including an understanding, some additional definitions, asked for some clarifications on the vision statement for the element, and some terms and policies cleanup in, for example, sustainable transportation. And some recommendation that the city do more to share information on geologic hazards. That was on the basis of their most recent meeting. Go to the next slide, please. Great, yes. So we've reflected their changes and staff input as well in the strikeout underline in the packet. So you can kind of see the progression of their, of their feedback. And this element, along with the others, will be coming out in draft form, as Kirsten mentioned, at the end of February.
So I don't know if you want to do questions by topic or just do it all at the end, but, sure.
Just a question about that chart of Bothel with all the heat map. That's actual, can you tell us what that represents? Because I saw it in the packet. It's like, what's going on? Everything is red. It's not good.
If we want to go back to that, that map, we can take a closer look at it. So this is a map showing where there's Heat Island effect, you may have heard. So it's areas that have generally more impervious area unless green infrastructure, green tree canopy. So those areas are more likely to feel the effects of heat when we have higher heat days. And so this is a map that's interesting to show in addition to, we have maps of the city's tree canopy assessment from a few years ago. And I believe the city's thinking, Jason can speak to this, maybe of updating that information. And so the city can use this to help prioritize investments and where to add additional tree canopy. Take a closer look at, at those environments and see what might be some useful improvements.
That's absolutely true. We'll be moving forward with an urban forestry management plan, and that'll include a tree canopy assessment. We'll also try to overlay certain census data that we have available that would identify parts of the city where we have our most vulnerable populations. So we can correlate that to the heat map that you see there and identify strategies to really mitigate impacts on vulnerable populations as well.
Thank you. Can I ask a follow-up? The follow-up, so can we get an overlay with the, the tree canopy and then the housing? How the house, because I'm presumably, I mean, since this covers a lot of the land, there's a lot of houses in those lands. So how does that, you know? Because it might help in the future as we strategize about, does housing, type of housing affect the color of the, you know? Do you go up and down that gradient over there? Parking?
Yeah, I think there could be a way for us to join the information that we have on housing, housing types, and the heat map that you see there. I don't know that it would show a direct correlation between housing types, but you could at least see the population density. We have some population density maps and correlated to that, at least give you that information.
The thing it looks like to me is it looks like a map of where the most pavement is in the city. Like, so I'm curious, like, how it correlates to that. And like, what is the main driver of that in the built environment? And, and how can we do better? But we're probably getting a little bit beyond the scope of what we're looking at for tonight.
It is interesting to try to dissect what exactly turns something that darker red. I'm, for example, honing in on a site on 228, the FEMA site. That showing up is rather red, but doesn't have a tremendous amount of impervious surface, but it's a very open site. So trying to figure out exactly why something has that higher heat severity could be really interesting to dissect a little further.
I was able to locate Bothel High and the colleges on the map based by how red they were. And downtown, they're pretty clear. It's not Mason's house.
It's not my house. And then there's like the, the Home Depot area down there.
That's fascinating. That's interesting.
Well, but something that I, I've been aware of is that you have things that can contribute to temperature. I mean, I ran across something that said that solar panels can raise the ambient temperature around them five or 10 degrees. And I thought, well, that's kind of shooting yourself in the foot. But it's more than just auto emissions that are going on there. I've wondered, and thank you for bringing up tree canopies, because that's a huge, huge part of it. But I've also wondered if there is any best available science for rooftops that are light. And I ran across somewhere, some municipality, some government, some area was using lighter pavement to create, not absorb as much heat. So I don't know if that's something that we, that that's a rabbit hole that we want to go down. But it seems like it cumulatively could have a lot of effect on reducing heat absorption.
We can bring back information on strategies, and there's other studies from other, other forums that give like, how effective are different measures at, at reducing heat or greenhouse gas or other factors?
So we're all basically trying to solve the problem of why is it all dark red? But we don't even know why it's, there's so much dark. So whatever, however, however way we can answer that question is like, what's contributing to those, to that? Then we can, I mean, you all will be figuring out the solution. So, thank you.
I have similar questions. I, I think that this is a really great kind of data point to start with and to guide planning. But I'd really love, and I look forward to the times when there's gonna be more, we'll be able to go into more depth about the whys and the hows and the what we can do and, and what is effective. So I'm glad that this is, this work has begun and we're moving in that direction. So thank you.
We've worked with staff on an, on an assessment of the policies, bringing in information that we had available about different vulnerabilities. And so we can bring back the information that goes with this and show the flip side. Where's the tree canopy more prevalent? This is generally where there's more impervious and less, less canopy.
And then I think before we move on, I was gonna have Emily come up and introduce herself really briefly.
While she's coming, I just wanted to add in aside to acknowledge that we live in an area where there's a lot of microclimates. And so some of it, you know, you're talking about Nike Hill. Maybe it's just a confluence area where air, air doesn't move and it gets warmer. I have no idea. But I am, as a gardener, keenly aware that microclimates are everywhere.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Emily, and I am from California. And I'm working this year with City of Bothel and the Community Development Department as a civics park fellow. So while I have you here, I'll talk a little bit about civics park, because I think the program is really cool. Civics Park is an AmeriCorps program. And they started because they realized city governments are, they have a lot on their plate. They have a lot to do. And so capacity building is incredibly important. And so they're dedicated to building this local capacity for local public agencies to address community resilience issues. And they started in 2014 in California, and they have since expanded. Just last year was their first year in Washington and Colorado states. And so this year, there are 130 fellows. Twenty of us are in Washington. And so we're holding down the fort in different areas, in the greater Seattle area, as well as Spokane and a little bit more south. Working on a bunch of different things, including EV plans, vulnerability assessments. And then my work is going to be primarily working on, at this phase, the climate element. So I've been working along the drafting process. And then like looking at the goals and policies for the comp plan. And then eventually I'll shift more into the implementation aspect as well. So I'll help develop actionable steps that can be accumulated and to reach these goals that are shown in the packets that you've all been distributed, to see how can we reach these goals? What are the actionable steps that we can do to achieve that? Put that in a climate action plan. So I'll be working a little bit about that along the line, and also about outreach. So I helped out with the open house, and I'll look forward to opening up more with the one in March. And I'm just really excited to be here. I went to school in Seattle, and I'm excited to be back in the Pacific Northwest. I love this area, and I've really enjoyed my about two months so far on the job and looking forward to the months to come. So thanks for having me.
Thanks for being here.
Alright, so moving on, we're gonna be talking about the natural environment element.
Can I pause real quick?
Sure.
Because we just got done talking about the climate element, and I think it's really cool that the climate element was started by former council member Dewar, who became Rep. Dewar and then passed it. So we have a, we have a Bothel history with the climate element too, which is pretty neat.
Very nice. So in terms of recommended priorities, so obviously, the existing climate-related goals and policies in the natural environment element will be going into the climate element. Of course, reviewing that best available science and updating the goals and policies as appropriate for the most up-to-date information. We are focusing also on interdepartmental review. That's been a really big goal of mine throughout this whole process, is really making sure all the departments have a role in this. So in this one in particular, that's really big for the Storm Division. So working with Janet Gear and Boyd's team, making sure that they have a chance to review all of these. And then reviewing the existing actions that are in the plan and deciding what we want to add into our implementation plan. Additionally, I want to make sure revising our mapping data as needed and as we have it. Reviewing for consistency with state and federal agency requirements. Again, as with all the parts of the plan, reviewing through an environmental justice and racial equity lens. And then as we've heard feedback from both Planning Commission and Council, is reviewing the content and the language more generally, making sure that any words that need updating or, you know, fixing, we're doing that. And that's pretty much what I have for the natural environment element. So if you have questions on that, happy to take some of those.
We had comment about removing no net loss, what was the comments? No net loss language. And, and, yeah. Can you tell us about the conversation and where this is landing right now?
So I did speak a little bit with Lisa about this, and she might be better to speak on that than I am. But I know that, I think we, the, the goal was to replace no net loss with equal or greater, which we feel like is better than no net losses now. And also kind of makes more sense for the public to understand in terms of what that means. I think for the, a lot of the average person, they don't necessarily know what no net loss is. And I know that language is still in the shorelines element, because it's a strict requirement of the language in the shoreline element. But for the natural environment element, maybe softening some of the language to be a little more accessible.
So equal or greater would mean that those, that that would stay within the location that we're talking about? We're not, we wouldn't be moving it out to another jurisdiction if we're talking about equal or greater.
I'd have to defer to Lisa on what the changes are. As, as the code stands right now, there is an option for fee and lieu. That does already exist. So I don't know that any of the changes right now would, would change that, but.
There is existing.
Thank you. I agree with Kirsten's comments so far. The current language does refer to having allowance for off-site mitigation in, in sub-basins. And the draft language does speak to something similar within the same drainage basin or watershed. So I know the city's covered this issue in the last couple of years, so we can bring back more context on it. But generally speaking, the language still refers to mitigation, which is mitigation sequencing that came up in the comments. And it does speak to equal or greater function that Kirsten mentioned. So the idea is at least no net loss, if not improvement. And you'll see other language about increasing restoration and enhancement as well in that language.
I'll just tell you my concern. I remember the discussion that we had at council, and it's been passed, and it, it's on the books now. But when we talk about, I think we're gonna be talking about recharging our aquifers. Is that when, when we're talking about our aquifers, if we're moving that offsite into another basin that's removed from Bothel, are we really recharging our, our aquifers? So, and that's a whole other rewriting. But I, I will, I will just, you know, tell you that I have concerns that, you know, we'd be very careful that we keep, keep it within the Bothel. I don't know what basin we would say that we're, I mean, we're part of RIAA, but within our own smaller areas that we keep, that we prioritize keeping it within, because there is that chain reaction of, if you start moving things out of area, what does it happen down?
Sure.
Downstream or down aquifer.
I think what we can do is go back to our partner, DCG Watershed, that worked on the language and look back at the last couple of years of your own conversations on this topic and, and hone in on the, the language.
I have a question for you, and this kind of hearkens back to the Heat Island map a little bit. You know, when we look at new development, do we take into account the implications of new impervious surface per housing unit? So like, obviously, if somebody has a brand-new plat and they're pouring a bunch of roads, and they have four single-family homes, and a few acres goes from native habitat to mostly impervious surface. And then we look at a fourplex that's a redevelopment over something that's already been developed, and one obviously has a much bigger impact. Like, do we account for that anywhere in impact fees or something similar?
There are some, I think there's, I would, I have to kind of defer to Public Works on some of that, because they're the ones that calculate existing and proposed public surf, or impervious surface. And I think that there's some fees that come into account when it comes to that. Boyd would be the best person to talk about that. We do have limitations on hard surface coverage in basically any project, except for some of the more dense zones. But when it comes to, I guess you would say maybe mitigation for hard surface coverage, I'm not sure that we have anything currently. We do have some allowances in the code for if you want to give impervious, non-impervious surface or like vegetated roofs or impervious pavement, you get a 50% allowance in development. But when it comes to like the roadways and the right-of-way component of it, I would probably have to defer to Public Works. I can get back to you on that.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just, if there's a way we can encourage the more, the type of development that helps preserve our natural environment and discourage the type of development that makes our natural environment worse, I would like to do that.
Yeah, I know that was one of the main goals when we passed the clustered PUD code. And that's been really utilized quite well. We've taken in a lot of projects with that. So there could be an opportunity to kind of expand upon some of those concepts for development.
I wanted to jump back in. We did get, as council members already said, a, a couple of public comments about net gain. And to me, not being any kind of environmental scientist professionally, to be clear, that sounds better than existing or better, right? Like, I, I would really want to understand with like examples that perhaps people who work in tech and education and stuff could follow, not being climate scientists. Just what the trade-off is between those two. The other thing is I do agree with the comment about not having in-lu mitigation near fish habitat. I know when I was on Planning Commission, when we evaluated some shorelines stuff, it was brought up that some of those credit programs can do more good, because we're working with other dollars to do more good, even if it is offsite, than a small project could do within Bothel. So I think it would help us to have, again, examples that help us understand that. Because something can sound good in the abstract, but when we look at the impact of like building one house or whatever, it might not actually do much on its own. So just really diving in there. And then the other thing, Jason, you mentioned an urban forestry management plan. I've said this a few times, and I just, anything we can do to encourage trees and, and add more trees. So I don't know if the comprehensive plan is the way to, to get that in there. But anywhere we can put it in there and add meat to it and requirements, I would love to do.
I'm gonna piggyback off of that real quick, because I would very much like to go on the offense on trees. Not just say, we have to prevent other things in order to retain trees. But like, where do we have public right-of-way space where we could go plant trees? Like, if there are areas of underutilized street parking that we can plant trees instead, like, I would be very interested in doing something like that. And where in our public right-of-way or public space or city-owned land do we have places that it would be really good to plant trees? And then plant trees there. So again, I don't know if that's a comp plan. So again, I don't know if that's a comp plan thing either, but I would like to do that.
I think the urban forest management plan is an opportunity, getting an updated tree canopy assessment. And usually those come with potential planting area recommendations. So I think that would get at your thought there. But I think the comp plan is an opportunity to set the policy framework. And then the urban forest management plan would be the, how you're going to get there.
Outgrowth of that. Perfect. Thank you.
I have a question on the, the net gain and, and in lieu. I'm just kind of, and, and I might be demonstrating my ignorance here. So please help me understand how that conversation relates to the GMA. I guess what I'm sort of thinking is that if we are prioritizing, that there may be a risk of prior, of prioritizing local mitigation effort or like local efforts that might actually come at the expense of more wild natural spaces outside of Bothell that could be protected if we did encourage in lieu. And so if you could explain that to me, like, how off-base I am on that, I'd appreciate it.
I don't think you're off-base on that. And I think what we could bring back are some of the conversations that were referenced that have happened over the last couple of years, which is this, if you have an impact, you know, I think usually the first choice is mitigation sequencing. Can you avoid, minimize, et cetera? If you can't avoid or minimize, then typically the codes have a preference for onsite mitigation because that's where you're having the impact. But sometimes you can add or improve another area within the watershed that has more value, ecological value. And so I think that's the conversation we can bring back or some of those examples and use the context of conversations the city's had over the last couple of years, I think, to bring, to bring these policy issues home. The city has an obligation under growth management to protect wetlands that it recognizes that in an urban environment and with development, sometimes, including, it's not just homes, it could be roads, it could be whatever, that sometimes you have an impact. So how do you compensate for that impact? And so the city is following approaches that regulatory agencies and there, there's models that the city has considered over time and adapted its regulations to, to follow. So where you have these options, opportunities, you're not out of step, but I think we can bring back some more context in, in this discussion.
Yeah, I would, I would appreciate that. It has been a couple of years since I've got to be involved in conversations like that when I was on the Planning Commission. And, and those conversations probably continued after I left. And so, yeah, thank you.
All right. So I will move along and unless there's anything else to talk about, sounds good. So we're going to be talking about the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan, or Element, rather. Some of the recommended priorities is, we really want to clarify the relationship between the PROS Plan and the PROS Element, as well as the PROS Element to the Capital Facilities Element. So there's a lot of duplicated information that has made those elements quite lengthy and really wanting to be intentional about what really makes sense to be in the standalone Parks Rec and Open Space Element versus what's really more specific to capital facilities, as well as the PROS Plan, which is the sort of strategic implementing component. So we've been having conversations with Nick and other folks in Parks about that. And we also want to recognize that the PROS Plan was updated in 2020 and we want to align with the goals in that plan and align the policies with that as well. One of the increased emphasis areas in the element is going to be on recreational planning and programming. That's something we talked with part of the Parks Department about as a renewed focus. And like I mentioned before, really making sure we're doing robust interdepartmental coordination, knowing that, you know, just because it's the Parks Rec and Open Space Plan doesn't mean it doesn't affect other departments and other city functions. We want to identify potential development regulation updates that could be of a benefit for parks, looking forward to the next PROS Plan as an implementation component. And then, as I've mentioned with all the elements, looking through a racial equity and environmental justice lens and updating of language. And that's all I had on parks. And I didn't really have any specific feedback from Planning Commission on that.
Can I ask when the next PROS Plan will be initiated?
I don't know. I think it's.
Oh, look at you with the book right there.
I'm glad I wrote it down. It's not on my brain.
Though, when we did the last one, we had a really good Parks Board, I'll just say.
You're not biased at all.
Also mentioned too, we got some really, a lot of people were very excited about the Parks Booth at the open house. So one of the other things across the board is, of course, once we collate all the open house feedback, integrating that back into all the subject areas, so. And then the last thing is shorelines. Again, like I mentioned, we just updated it in 2019. Any pending amendments will be incorporated into the plan, of course, but other than that, we're just going to be reformatting it to match everything else and then diving into that in 2027. There were some recommended potential updates from watershed, but we didn't feel like they were significant enough to open up the whole process again for the element. And we're going to kind of hold on to those and keep them in mind for 2027.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, how do you note, you know, to whoever's down the road, keeping that in mind? You know, if they're, they're making recommendations, obviously you have a way of doing that, but if it doesn't involve a post-it note, for me, it could be like gone.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a matter of we put something in the implementation plan and just making sure that we take a look at the recommended updates from the 2024 comp plan when we go to update the 2027 SMP. Yeah. And that's all I have. So next steps are just working on revisions based on feedback from the public, Planning Commission and Council, revisions to the goals and policies as we're continuing to draft the elements. And then we'll have drafts in late February of 2024 with the EIS. The next time after, at the beginning of the year that you'll see me will be probably sometime in February, I want to come back to talk about the guiding principles and then just sort of talk about the proposed schedule for the year. And that's all I had. Again, if you ever have questions or comments and you want to contact me directly, I'm available too, so. And that's it.
I just, I just want to publicly say thank you because all these events, we're seeing you at them. And so thank you for, I don't know what vitamins you're taking, but, 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 but thank you for taking good care of you and rising to the call because I know we're asking a lot of you.
I'm taking a long holiday break and sleeping, so. Which you have earned.
Yes, thank you, for sure. And you're killing it.
I just want to say thanks, Kirsten, because I wanted the opportunity to say your name correctly.
Perfect.
He cheated.
I used the resources I had available to me. All right. We good?
Yep, thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you all. All right. Next up, we have council conversations. Council.
Oh, so, so I talked briefly with the mayor. I have a hero that I think is, I think is a hero for everybody here around the table, and that's Whitney Nagabauer and Whale Scout. And I had hoped she had stayed here because I was going to ask her what, you know, what, what it is that she loves most about Bothell, but she is quite a commanding force and presence in just rallying volunteers and making good work, hard work happen, not just at the landing, but all over the place. So anyway, that's, that's the hero that I wanted to put on the table.
I appreciate that. Whitney is awesome. We should all high five her the next time we see her.
What I really appreciate about Whitney is that Whitney sees something that needs to be done and then she does it. Like, she, there's, there's no like equivocation, there's no complaining, there's just like, there is work that needs to be done. I see a hole, I am going to step in and fill it. And like, oh my gosh, my kingdom for those people.
Much more welcome than the person that says, you know, it would be a really great idea if someone did, right? Not that I would ever do that.
Another thing about Whitney is that, like, she's not just really good at getting volunteers, she's really good at building partnerships and, and working together with organizations. I've just continually been impressed by how well Whale Scout and the Park, the Parks Department work together in bringing some of those activities. And I will just say personally that, that those service projects out on Wayne are like one of my newfound joys in life. I can't tell you how much it means to me to be able to go out there and, and rip up grass and then put native trees in. Like, it is just very fulfilling in a way that nothing else in my life quite fills that. So, yeah, I'm grateful for Whitney. And thank you for bringing, for bringing her up as a hero. Definitely a heroic figure in our city.
I was going to say shiro, but, you know. Okay. That's cool. I forgot earlier, I was going to shout out the Police Department. Wake up, Ken. The, I just wanted to say, like, congratulations on accreditation. We're super proud of you. I didn't say anything afterwards, but like, thank you. Like, I wouldn't trade you guys for any Police Department in the area and I'm super glad you're here.
And I will call out that there is going to be another community academy cohort. So if you are a resident still watching this meeting, one, I'm impressed, and two, you should consider doing it. I was in the first cohort and it was super informative and a really good experience.
It's probably just Whitney watching.
And also congratulations to the Police Department for completing that whole NORCOM, there you go, I see you now, the whole NORCOM transition. And Tony, you were instrumental in that, so thank you. Just, you did it. It happened.
Rem, did you have something to say?
I'm ready to go to executive session.
Channeling Ben and Ben's absence. All right. We are going to move to executive session, from which we will adjourn the meeting, so we won't be coming back here. The executive session will be about potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42301101I, anticipated the last 30 minutes with no action expected. It is 8:37 PM. We will be adjourning from executive session at 9:07 PM.